Bill Price for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. We're going to start with on the of our public meeting held on September 3rd.
Are you getting a motion?
Oh, second.
On favor.
Aye.
Any objections? And then we have our minutes of our, um, Slavens non-public meeting held on September 3rd at 10:00 in the morning. Do I have a motion for that?
Make that motion.
And a second?
Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or any... I think as everyone knows, um, our retired fire chief, um, Piki, Piki Dolus, I guess, passed away on the night before last, and, um, I think it's appropriate that we take a moment in silence in memory of him and his family and for his family. Thank you. Um, I'm sure that there'll be arrangements, a little bit of, um, uh, pop. Um, I know one thing that came to my mind is we have a new ambulance that we should be receiving. That might be, just as a suggestion, a great way to dedicate that ambulance to our chief or our retired chief in his memory, but that's just a thought. I'm sure he'd prefer a great big fire truck, I don't know. But we don't have one of those coming.
So, we actually went to his house a couple of weeks ago and brought him the plaque that was on the old tanker.
Yes.
And we put it in a, uh, wood.
With rocks.
Yeah. Yes, show rocks. Yeah. And needed to him, he was static about it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, he was just, he's a great hugger and a great joker. He told some really good jokes.
He would.
Yes, the services are out. Be coming out in February, right tomorrow. They've already got them, they said.
Awesome. Good, good.
They're getting their whole, pretty much a whole fire cover service.
Really? Nice, nice.
Good.
He deserved it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, our first order of business is under new business, and that would be for the library expansion presentation. And now.
Uh, thank you for having us here tonight. We are really excited to...
Is that, is that mic on or...
You're gonna have to speak up, because I'm having a hard time getting it.
No, no, these are not open mics. These are mics for people to hear.
Yeah, sit right down here. Face these guys and speak up and they'll be, they'll be here better.
Okay. No, that's great. Uh, thank you for having us here. We are really excited to share with you, uh, the, um, the, uh, the things that we've been doing as regards a potential library expansion. Um, we've had, um, to share and to share where to stand there. Uh, I want to thank everybody who's been a part of this so far. Uh, we have most of our proceeds here tonight and, um, a few friends, and, uh, we've had, um, I want to thank them for their ideas and their support and their time, most especially. Uh, we've also had some great guidance, um, from Barry Beauregard, BPS, and Jason LaCombe of, um, SNP Architects. I want to turn most of the time over to Jason, who's going to walk you through what this project looks like right now.
Right now. Right. Either, yes. And I believe you have a problem with...
Um, we do, but we'll have to take a moment of interruption. We can only have one plug, so I'll have to basically pause everything if you need the presentation to be on.
I think I did.
So if that's what you want, then we're gonna have to take a moment to pause the video at least, so that I can...
Technical difficulties. What's a presentation without technical difficulties?
No, did you give me two of these? What is it called?
It is.
Was there two?
It was... That's not right, you have to say, yeah, it's that one.
It's not changing then.
The PowerPoint is not uploading, so taking a minute. Okay, I'm telling it to do too many things at once. All right, at least we got that. Hold on a second. Don't start, because now I've stopped the video, so I've got a...
That's something to get rid of the second.
Okay.
Just tell me when you want to move that.
Sure.
For the rest of the life.
I'm realizing, so the laser pointer won't work on the TV. Would it be okay if I stood up here, so I just...
Sure.
Thank you for your flexibility. All right, um, I'm Jason LaCombe. I'm the principal of SMP Architecture for Basing Concord, and, um, we have the, the pleasure of about eighty percent of our work being municipal projects. Uh, we have roughly thirty libraries in our portfolio, and so it's been really fun to work, uh, with the trustees and the... I lean on developing a concept for this, but I'd like to talk to you tonight about is, uh, what's the process that we went through? Uh, what are some of the challenges that we faced and present a concept that we've come up with that checks a lot of the boxes? I want to make it clear that, um, this is just an idea. By no means is it, you know, fully vetted and designed, but we have a concept that, uh, uh, we believe, uh, will serve the community moving forward, and we have a preliminary budget, which is what everybody did. All good? All right, next slide. We can go quick. Um, so where are we in the process? We can just page the next one. The, the design process is, uh... We'll go quick. All right, um, so define identifying a brainstorm. So we, we worked with the committee to define what are the problems, what are the challenges, identify some opportunities, brainstorm ideas. We came up with building programs. We go to the next one. And now we're at the communicate. So this says communicate the solution, but really it's communicate a concept. Here's an idea. It's, I think, the third iteration, and maybe a couple of variations thereof. Um, next one. All right, looking at another way, we like to call this the defined project. Architectural process goes through, you know, we start with a big idea, we start with, um, needs and goals, and we take it all the way through construction and completion, ribbon cuttings, but we're just trying to figure out what is the project that makes sense for the town. Next one. So we start with, uh, we start with a building program. We work through, um, all the needs for the spaces rather than start with the, what do you have? We started with the, what makes sense for the library to operate now and for the next first, you know, twenty years, twenty-five years, which is a reasonable plan. We all know that municipalities don't get rid of buildings. Your building's, uh, probably about a hundred years old. It'll probably happen for another hundred years, so we do want to look that far, but that's just not realistic. This is what, um, the needs of the library really dictate in terms of general square footage. If we go to the next one. And then brought my team in and we measured the building. Next one. And I drew the short straw with, with the photograph. It was, it was February, and I got the outside measurement. Uh, so, next one. Yeah, we can just look through. There we go. So the walkway in the back coming out of the children's area. Anyone who hasn't been to the library, it's an experience to say. Uh, so it's really steep, snow slides onto it. Uh, next one. And... The computer will catch up with you. There it is. Yeah, so just to prove that we were there. All right, next slide. Uh, we then start with looking at the site. We, we believe that, you know, libraries of any municipal building, but they have a place in the community, and you have a beautiful historic building and have a strong presence on Main Street, and I think that's something we really valued. Go to the next one. So we identified, obviously, the rear of the library as sort of what we consider the primary opportunity to expand. And the next one, with a secondary opportunity down here. All right, secondary space. Um, it's secondary not only because it's beside and it's difficult in terms of flow and access because of the large chimney, but we also really wanted to respect the historic front, so how that library, um, sits on Main Street and is presented, that's a, a really, um, uh, appropriate respectful, uh, nature, and expanding that, we just felt it would be too impactful. So that was a really big consideration. Next one. All right, so then we came up with a one concept, the concept A. We can go straight to concept B. Yep. All right. Okay, concept B, and then concept C. Um, so we worked through these over the course of, um, two or three meetings. I can't remember which, with the trustees, and really kicked around, well, what makes sense in terms of flow and space? Uh, so here we started looking at where's the front door. Uh, because your current library is two stories, it makes sense that the addition is also two stories. Uh, but there were some challenges there because a hundred-year-old building, um, has really leveled floor to floor, and it doesn't have modern HVAC systems, and it's modern plumbing, and it was never designed for those things. So there are some unique challenges, um, in this building. So if we, there are the next one. This is where hopefully we knew the little one. Um, they also, a hundred years ago, they didn't think about stuff like ADA compliance. So how do people with mobility issues get around the building? So, uh, here's your existing building, Main Street here. This is currently the children's area down on the lower level. And what we came up with is a final, or a concept D that creates a split-level entry. So, uh, we're bringing off, we're moving your main door, so the primary entry is now, um, in the rear of the building in the addition. And there's a couple of reasons. We can raise the elevation on that main floor, so that we can get an easily compliant access. Everybody comes in, it connects well to their children's areas. You come in on this level, this is, uh, this is what we call the grab-and-go section library. It releases media, newspapers, magazines, throughout all the allowed aspects. Um, we also have the welcome desk and technical services and a program. So this would be a small community room, um, a little bit smaller than this, uh, maybe a, it's small ones. Uh, but it would house, you know, twenty, twenty-five people, usually for a library program. We did set it up so that it could be used after hours. From this level, a half a flight of stairs down here into the children's. So we created this link in the center that connects the addition with the historic, where we have all our circulation. So this is the stairs and the elevators. So that allows us to make every floor in this building, um, compliant and accessible, which was a, a primary. Moving upstairs, next slide, please. So, uh, if we go from that level up a half a flight of stairs, we arrive at the existing mainboard library, so the beautiful historic library. We're doing this by only removing two windows on the back side, so we were trying to lessen the impact on the historic interior as well as the exterior, but still make the library flow, get really good lines of sight, which are important, um, and it makes way to mindings. So lines of sight have a dual purpose. One is it's important for the staff and Eileen to see who's coming and going from the library, who's moving around the library, but it's also easier for patrons, when they can come in, to find what they're looking for easily without necessarily needing a lot of assistance. So it makes the library more welcoming and, uh, of service. From that level, up another half a flight of stairs, we're in the main library proper of the addition. And from here, this is where the adult collection would lay out. We have a small area for, uh, teens and young adults. We have some computer workstations. We have a, um, a study room, a small little staff area, and a secondary, not necessarily a checkout desk, but a resource desk, so just an area for staff to work, but be available to help, um, in patients. We also, um, integrated in a small, over the meeting room on the main board, um, a small screened-in porch. And we thought this was an opportunity to take advantage of the beautiful gazebo that the town has and that town green, really get the library integrated in. So if you think of public events going on, there's a small patio on that, that I want to break. There's a three ninety porch up above, and it would really be a nice amenity, um, both the library but for the town overall. If we go back a slide. Um, so fingers crossed, computer play. So this is a video animation that we did.
First.
You should just be able to click on it.
Okay.
Do you mind? Okay, let's hit the little play. There we go. Okay, so after we jump out of the airplane, um, it's always important, right, yeah. Come down onto Main Street. It's gonna run a little slow, but we'll get through it. So again, preserving the historic front of the library, that's really important. Um, the memorial garden, the landscape along Main Street, you know, you invested a lot on Main Street. I think it's important that we retain, retain that. As you come around the entryway, this is where you can start to see the addition. So we're playing a few little tricks about bringing people around, um, to the new front door, but really it's oriented to address your existing parking. So we don't need to add parking, we don't need to add new pavement, we don't need to add more drives, um, so it's really tough to, to use this landscape. Small front porch carries around, so this is the program room. There's that screened porch that I was mentioning. We should jump up a little for the gazebo. Little patio area, so that has glass that goes into, um, so you get this in-out experience, uh, into the library. Uh, we do show solar panels, every, pretty much every community building we work on, everybody, somebody asked above solar. Typically is done as a separate project, and we just prep the building for it, so it's structurally ready, it has conduits, it has spaces electric. Uh, this is an important view because we were setting that addition back from the historic, again, to, to maintain that integrity. Around, we should have added the front door, and we've started to build out the interior design concept, but it's not quite there yet, so it's not crazy energy that we had. And then, yeah, let's put in budget. This is probably what everybody really will fear. All right, so the budget, uh, we can go to the next one. We can go quick to the couple. It's important, uh, when we look at budgeting, uh, it's not just about construction. A lot of people just, uh, have, you know, fortunate experience of having sometimes just take a construction budget and then move forward. We want to look at it more holistically. Hope we can go to the next one. It's really, oh, yeah, there we go. It's really about risk management. I, I said, we have, we have a concept, we have a design. We've put a budget together based on reasonable assumptions that are experienced work with BPS, um, about what is gonna take to really deliver this project. Uh, it's important because we do enough municipal projects. When we bring in projects to the voters, that, uh, they see what the project is, they can trust the number, and know that we're not gonna come back and ask for a little money. That's a nerve. Uh, I would, I'd be honest with you. So risk management, construction is inherently risky. We have a, a concept, we have a lot of unknowns, but, uh, through our collective experience, we're able to, uh, make reasonable assumptions, reasonable budgets, and then, um, finish up the design for that one. Next one. Now we talk about real estate. Anyway, construction costs, yeah, maybe just skip them, skip ahead. Uh, so it includes construction costs. It includes furniture, fixtures, and equipment, everything outfit, um, the library made it operational. It includes final design and engineering. It includes contingencies, um, for surely some of the last four years, five years, everybody goes and scolds up on the construction market. Currently, this project is budgeted at four point eight five million dollars, including all those. And the next one, contingency is four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, that's part of that. So roughly a little over ten percent of the project is contingency. Uh, contingency covers, uh, unknowns and what's gonna happen with the economy, you know, tariffs are hanging out there, contingency covers, um, all the things that the library hasn't necessarily told us that they wanted in the building, that we're gonna have to put in the final bizarre. It also includes changes in the market for the assumptions that... We can stick ahead to two, and I can open up the questions.
How are you gonna pay for this?
Well, that's a decision that's out of my area of expertise.
Oh, oh, oh. You love the Belmont?
I do not.
But you said the thing was, contingency was four ninety-five, but up here it says it's one forty-five.
It's one forty-five in the CM, but there's an owner contingency on top of that.
All right. No, I'm talking.
Yeah, so that's the four ninety-five.
Okay. Um, when this is being built, is the main part of the building gonna be open? Because you're gonna be... I mean, are you closing the library during construction?
Uh, I don't think that's been, that decision is really made, but, but the design, the, the design would allow the existing library to continue to operate. Uh, the vast majority of our libraries stay open, uh, because most don't have space that they could move to.
Sure, that's why I was asking that.
So it, it varies. Uh, I will say, um, it is a building under construction. Uh, we can keep utilities operational. We can seal off the space, we can make it safe, uh, but you're asking staff and patrons to basically work in a construction site, and there's sort of inherent, you know, it's not great, but you can do it. Um, and, uh, and I think that's, that's a broader conversation.
Obviously, they could probably change their hours into more evenings versus during the day or something.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of...
Yeah.
Yeah.
But again, uh, most people stay. We did Exeter Library, right? Exeter, to keep them open, was nine phases of construction, and, uh, somewhere around phase seven, the staff was like, don't ask us to move anymore, because it's, it, it is a lot of work. Uh, but that was also significantly larger. And a more invasive branch.
Don't retract the very notes, that's for sure. Yeah.
Yeah.
We can even get it passed to get into this building.
Helen Baker, please, come on. Do, do that. Big one. Yeah. Please do for us with that.
Yeah.
Really haven't had a budget for two years, get a pass, so. I don't know what's going on, why? You got any, whether we need it or not, it's not a question. You know, people that are in the existing library have done an outstanding, uh, outstanding. Right now, um, they don't like the taxes. One thing we have gone against this is that, did you ever do a study last year? How the tax bill went. Eighty-six percent of the, eighty-six cents on every tax dollar goes to school. And they have spent, in my, they spent five hundred and fifty thousand going to Parkland. They ain't any different than it was last year. It's flat, and it was black laughing.
Yep, I have the same conversation in my tower. So I don't, I don't live in Belmont, but...
And the other thing we kind of sicked up here is the state's gonna force us, we're afraid, to replace the main for ten thousand, ten, ten.
Ten, I wish that happened.
Ten million dollars right now, and that's right now.
Yeah, honestly, it's gonna, it's gonna take just a lot of selling from...
Yeah.
The government involved.
Well, it's going to be, it's gonna take a lot of selling from the, um, uh, library trustees and the... I mean, that's how we get the police station pass. A lot of coffee and a lot of tea and a lot of out there beating the pavement to get that pass.
That would be... Get them to come in and look at the building, see what you guys just start working.
Don't, I don't disagree this.
It's even, I'm not saying it's not.
I've been sitting with this here for a lot of years. Twenty years ago, we had a plan for this. They didn't... Wasn't anywhere near, we didn't nearly know what I'm seeing here. But who's to add on and that, that...
Yeah.
It was pretty, it was like... You didn't have the same people that you have now, but on the library, it's got a lot more going for it right now. Really, the public opinion, it has to be brought forth, or it's not just out of system, it's there.
Absolutely.
That's, looks like a very good plan to be.
We, we work, I would say, we worked very hard to keep it to the needs and really, you know... We, we work, I would say we worked very hard to keep it to the needs and really, you know, not. Yeah, and he keeps, and he keeps me in line. Any other questions about the presentation?
No, I mean, it's, it's beautiful. It's just.
The right idea.
Yeah.
And you know, if needed, it's just selling it.
Like I kept the front of the building and then add to the side, build behind it.
Yeah, yeah, that's, uh, that's. We have the pleasure of working in a lot of historical buildings and that's really important. So to respect that history, but also understand that they're trying to build something.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mary Charlie is our Chair of Trustees and I'm Sheila Cunningham. I'm a trustee, so a secretary. Um, we brought this forward to you today because we had come earlier and approved the financing for this phase of the construction. And so I wanted to show you where we are. And with design, we've been through a number of iterations that we thought would be the best for the town of Belmont. Taking into consideration the historic existing building. And also looking ahead as many years as possible to make it this work for the citizens of Belmont. Um, we know financing is an issue. At this point in time, we have not had yet the opportunity to explore that further. Um, the options that we've identified so far. Are if we were to have a warrant article on the, the town ballot, the voters would approve. Which we would need, of course, you folks to spearhead for us. Um, also, we discovered this week that we could actually go to a bank and ask for a loan. Which this is kinda news. We didn't expect we'd be able to do that for whatever reason. And so that's where we are in the project now. We have a design that we really love. We think meets the needs of what we've asked the architect to do for us. Jason and. And BPS have been wonderful to work with and they're also very reputable. And so that was one of our considerations as well. We didn't wanna just do something for the sake of having an inexpensive solution to present to you. That we would have worries whether or not it'd be standing up in ten years. So that was part of our concern as well. So part of what we're looking for now is some feedback from you folks to help us figure out those steps.
I can give you a couple of numbers that we've been putting away. It seems like forever money in the capital reserve fund. So that amount is four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars currently. We will be requesting another twenty-five thousand. Um, which we do every year, which we do every year. Um, the interest, cause that's the only part that we could spend on reaching out and the trustees of trust funds for the Duffy Fund. Is two hundred and thirty thousand, which isn't much. We don't really wanna spend a lot of that. We're actually looking into some repairs now. There are going to be probably about thirty thousand dollars that we'll have to make a request of the existing library. We need to look at the painting. On the outside that's peeling, the chimney repairs and the woodwork that had water damage. Inside, we wanna make sure that we're maintaining the library and keeping it up to where it needs to be as well. So we'll be also requesting about roughly maybe a little bit less thirty thousand from the Duffy Fund currently. Um, sorry.
No, go, go ahead.
No, go.
Okay, um, I have also been looking at uh grant opportunities, which are not as thick on the ground as they used to be. Um, there are four or five grants that if we had a project that was. Warrant article ready, um, I think I could reasonably apply for at least a few of those grants. To see if I could relieve any of that, um, that burden on, um. On whether it's a bond or a loan. So there are some grant opportunities. Um, that would be large enough to help with. Uh, a project of this size.
So we talked to the, we had attorney counsel that actually works for the town of Belmont come meet with us last week, which was really informative. So he said we could put it out to the bond market. Um, we, I didn't know personally that if you wanted to say we receive a donation for a million dollars. I didn't know that you couldn't pay your bond off earlier. So he said there were other options that you could go around to different banks, like the Duffy Fund is through the Laconia Bank. We have, the town has the Camden Bank now from Northway. So he did say that we could. I, I didn't know that was an option either, but we did receive legal counsel on that. Uh, I think the loan would be under the town of Belmont, would be the trustees.
But all out of silverware, anyway, if you can.
Yes, it's just a place of financing that we were, I'm, I'm sure are unaware of as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you ever looked into the Pell Grant situation? Um, Pell Grant is a community grant for educational purposes and for libraries. And that would be something that, and I know that, uh, I have some property in Belmont and that small town that just. Uh, Pell Grant for one point two million dollars to, uh, renew the library and the payback is. Zero. And Pell Grant somewhere, and sometimes with the money that we look at, sometimes we all hate to spend money foolishly. But foolishly is not, is when you, well, you look and find, maybe through some of your contractors, that a professional grant writer. Now, we in town don't really have one. We had a young man that worked for our number two man in the highway department last year. That is a brand new dump truck for, what it would cost for a pickup truck. And he applied again this year and he got another one. But it's safe, my, well, government won't, it was up in E research, we got it. So in two years, he saved us a half, more than a half a million dollars. But this money's out there, but it's, I have somebody knows, I don't know how to go get it, but it's safe.
Yeah, so, um, I would, if we can find someone who's helpful with that, um. We have received grants over the past ten years that I've been here. Um, and, and about a, I'm told all five of those grants are about a hundred thousand dollars.
Eighteen years ago, this plan was brought before, I happened to be a selectman back then. And, uh. There was another plan brought forth and actually was this same money. We all know that the same money. In eighteen years, this doesn't seem like a bad price to me because we all know inflation is here.
We, we did look at those plans, but with the revitalization. And everything had to be changed.
Because right now, as Ruth mentioned, we've got a problem with the state, because we got a sewer line problem now on forty, which involves every village. People in the village here that's on sewer. And if we have to replace that line rather than repair it, it's gonna be over ten million dollars. And people that don't live in town, don't wanna pay on their tax bill for sewer that. They have their own septic system. So when someone comes and picks it, they pay their bill. And that's gonna be a real issue coming forth. And if you know, we're in year two of bidding and voting the budget at this time.
Believe me, I, I appreciate the difficulties, um.
Oh, no more than I do, wasn't I?
Yes, uh, we, um. We, um, I was looking back through the history and I, um, I think Colleen gave you, uh, uh, some of the history that I've gathered. And it's been forty, more than forty years that the library has been trying. So it not, hasn't always been an active trying, but that the people have recognized that there's a need, um, in the library. Um, for the library to provide the services that the people have said they want. I, I, I do appreciate that no time is a good time, it's kind of asked. Um, and that we're, um, but we're hopeful that we can. Um, present to the public, to you, to the budget committee, um, that this is a re- a reasonable plan.
This is gonna fly. It's not even, it's one-on-one. You have to go see Mrs. Smith or Mr. Jones. It's gotta be one-on-one. We experienced that with the police department. It was one-on-one, on-on-one, on-on-one. Because obviously, there's, you've seen the voting, the number of people that even come out and vote has been brutal, okay? And you not only have got to sell it, but you've got to convince them that they have to go to vote for it to work. And it's gotta be one-on-one. It, I don't know how else to do it. That's how the police station got passed. Um, couple of us spent a lot of one-on-one, all of the community, and that's how it happens.
We did look at, so they definitely find that one of the stipulations was that the library could not be moved from its existing place. What the Duffy Fund would be null and void.
Right.
We did speak with the attorney about, cause some people had, um, requested we look in about currying the stip. The stipulation on the Duffy Fund. It was amazing that he, he has that background knowledge. He said most likely the Attorney General would never approve that. Because when people make their will or their trust.
Yeah.
The expectation is that you follow what the stipulation was. So we did seek in that in case we wanted more money as well. Um, that was really informative.
In, interest wise, between the bond and the loan, wouldn't, would the bond be lower interest bearing?
He said we would have to shop around. He said go to, so the Duffy Fund is run through the Laconia Bank. You might have an in through that, right? Um, Camden Bank has a municipality of, of Belmont. So it all depends. The bond, he explained, gets sent out in the bond market to see what the best. So we have not started yet, cause we just found this out last week, of shopping around at banks and we're trying to get it in between of all of our meetings.
It depends on what's happening on the real world, and whether it's, you're gonna be able to get better interest from a bank.
So the, um, the bond bank just released their July twenty-five schedule, so they do in July and January.
Yeah.
So based on the July schedule, unless you save for thirty years, cause obviously you'd wanna probably put it as long as possible to keep the rate down. You'd be looking at anywhere between a hundred and seventy-five to a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars a year for your principal and interest payment. And their rate was four point, uh, eight-six for twenty-nine years. So, and the interest rate just went down.
Hmm, a quarter.
A quarter today. Uh, so it'd probably be about that. Around that.
One of the other things that we. Need to turn, one of the other things that we learned in speaking with the attorney is that going through the bond. There is no opportunity apparently to pay it off early. Where, which is why, having learned that, we said, well, geez, maybe we should explore the banks. Because with a bank, if we were able to, you know, save money by paying a debt off sooner, like you would with your mortgage. We had the option to do that.
With a bond, I don't think you're going to be able to pay it off sooner.
You're hoping somebody would.
Your will, as a donation. Never know, but you could also do eighty-twenty. So it could be eighty percent bond, twenty percent low.
In other words, from the financial side of it, other than knowing how much it's going to cost, we're a little bit. At a disadvantage coming to you now, because we don't have answers on things like that. We haven't had the time to do the homework.
How many more peoples are gonna take to work in this new building?
We don't have a specific answer, but a lot of what the, that was a concern we raised in the design. That we needed, from the standpoint of, we needed to be able to have those lines of sight that Jason talked about. We realize we probably will need some additional staff, but we really can't answer that question right now.
But that is a great question, because whether they're salary position and benefited position, we have looked at that as well. Um, but we're aware it's a potential thing that we need to plan for.
So I guess I have one question for Mr. Pike, and that is, you were talking about this, uh, possible sewer issue that has to be dealt with. What kind of timeline, timeline?
They bet you've gone down one forty. And you get past, uh, the intersection of South and. On the left-hand side, you'll see some instruction. It looks like there's a man got a. Mobile unit in there with some trees he's cut down and along the highway on. On the left side of the road, as you're headed to Tilton, you'll see some trees previous to that, where you get to that area. Some, everyone's got a driveway, but on the left of that roadway is where you. A sewer line comes out of the driveway where the Coca-Cola plant does, is, and goes down the side of one forty. And it's a cement lined steel casing pipe. As I say, steel on the outside, cement line, and it's leaking. Um, many years ago, the Tilton Water District relied on a pond upon Maydow, which was the Knoll Pond, and the water was gravity fed into Tilton. They no longer, the Tilton Offshore Water Department draws their water out of the swamp. On the left-hand side of the road. Just blow with this pipe leaking. That estimated cost right now, we have, if we come from the state, we got to list this. It went from four million dollars to ten point two million dollars to fix this pipe. Couple reasons. And I brought it up then and I would bring it up again with them. Is there anywhere near water? When the Winnipeg River Basin started back when I was in high school and I went from Plymouth all the way to Franklin. Creep waters made in our rivers and our lakes. Anywhere near water, they, they have cement encasing. And when I say cement. Get on a boat, on a swamp, look at the shorefront, parallel to. Blue tree, you see this cement box that goes along the lake, inside that's a sewer pipe. Goes all the way down, that stuff's coming from Meredith and that, all the way down through pumping stations and ends up in Franklin, New Hampshire. That's where, that's where the sewer plant is. That's where our line goes from this village. Outside of one forty, and right beside that swamp, what do we have on this side of that swamp? Some of the biggest gravel pits in central New Hampshire. So these trucks get on there and load them up with a hundred thousand pounds of gravel and then cross that road and you can stand beside the road and just like jelly. So the vibration over the years has made that, it's worn the pipe. That's why it's cement lined. Where are, where are they fixing it? Ladies from the state was in here with their engineer and they had no federal funds to help. There's no, they. We don't have any money in our budget to help you at all. And I've been wanting to sit here and listen to this. We have a need, so you get, round numbers, let's call four hundred people that are on sewer. Are they gonna pay back ten million dollars? Ain't gonna happen. And the way people vote in this town and the lack of voters we have, they really understand the issues, they don't come out and vote. What are we gonna do? Can't shut the sewer off. Well, somehow, we're gonna have to bite the bullet, let me, as it is now, we don't get a choice in the school budget. They send us a bill and we pay it. That's the way it goes. And we're arguing this with the state. In fact, Frank Lamont sitting in the back knee, I'm just arguing that they have. I would manage over highway department, and let's do some more test spots. And you see more and more spots on the left side of the road. They played some brush out, done some test hole down, look at this, on his request. Because maybe we can put a line up like Bennett, which means starting expensive, probably a couple million bucks. But fix where it's leaking and not dig up across that, because the bix is gonna be, you can put a cement box across it. Over the north view line. And we have sent here with no control, none.
At least you can't come wrong, but it does seem like it'll probably get it next, by next year, we know more. Like right now, we're still, we did the test bits, but we're still fighting with them. So they aren't seeing them getting back to us with the ultimate decision by the end of the year.
Or when they do.
Likely not. But I don't know if they've actually put it forward in their budget and it was approved or not. Uh, we did just get the other report that we were waiting for from, um. What is it, not Underwood, but, um, the other consultant that they hired.
We had, they had a company test corrosion level.
And we'll have a pow-up to meet about that and what we do moving forward.
The problem is, is it's a high-pressure line and it feeds Belmont. So there, it's our responsibility. So that's what we're dealing with right now. So we don't know if that's gonna happen. This year. It's gonna happen. And the problem is that federal monies have dried up. And so this is the way, my feeling is, this is the way that they're keeping themselves in business. And throwing it back on the taxpayers, cause there's no federal funds to. and throwing it back on the taxpayers because there's no federal funds to help do that.
And your question was, will it be a warrant article competition thing? No, it will not be. It would be just a increase to the taxpayers. Um, because the uh, the state would be taking the loan off the town. So we would just be paying the bill for it.
Hmm. So that's, we can't.
Right, but it's not a competition.
Five or ten.
We're all adling for the state goal.
Yeah.
Hey, I look ten.
Awesome. Um, any other questions?
No, Frank Lamont.
Yeah, very nice of you.
My only question would be, I assume that they wanna move on this in twenty-six. We are in the midst of budget season and we would be needing to put together a warrant article like right now.
Yes, if they.
You, I think the next steps would be you to correct me to look at funding sources, whether it be a loan or a bond. Would be the next steps to present. I think they should also be looking at all, every and all of grant opportunity. Because if they do get grant opportunities, then you would need to word your warrant article in such a way to reduce that amount of that loan or bond by the amount of the grants if the bond or a loan passes. Um, so we would kinda need to work hands to hands with that.
And we'd also put Alicia like underneath, like the warrant article, capital reserve fund.
Yeah, any way you're right. I mean, you'd, would need to be worded in the warrant article, and then you would also need to know what I'm asking the bank for, so I'm not, you know.
So we could also meet with the, I, I mean, it's only two thirty in the Duffy Fund. We're using probably twenty to thirty thousand to fix what we have now. We may not decide to touch a Duffy Fund right now. Um.
Well, and I'll, I'll be honest with you. My two cents would be you do not touch the Duffy Fund right now. Because even though we have numbers here, alright, is that there's always a surprise.
Correct.
Some can agree. And you might want that because um, even though they say, just say for instance, I think it says um, um, utility costs and fees thirty-five thousand, okay? So if, what if it comes in at forty thousand, are they gonna take something away from something else? Are they gonna absorb it? What are you gonna have an extra cost at the end? So what about?
Digging in the end, everybody's scared. We just put propane in this building, and we wanted to bury propane tanks.
Yeah.
And we couldn't because that's Indian burial ground.
We wanna be careful.
We couldn't dig in the plant, we couldn't dig into the rock, we put them on top of the ground.
Yeah. Yeah.
So do we know if the library is part of that?
I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm not.
But I do.
Anything that that was.
Right, I agree, yeah.
We weren't involved in that decision.
Yeah, you wanna be careful. But I do notice that they, they do have borrowings and test bits. In the, oh, so, but yeah.
I would have to confirm, but it looks like through the, for the January sale, the applications start in uh October, but it would have to be um all wrapped up by January, which we don't have a March meeting, so I don't think we would qualify for a January sale. We'd qualify for then the next round, which I believe is the July sale. So we couldn't probably start the bond process until the new year anyway, which.
And then there's another contingency. What if the bonds go up, the bond rate goes up?
Yeah, they only, they give you an estimate, so you can kinda, you have, you have to word your warrant article accordingly because obviously.
Yeah.
But the interest rate went down one.
Hmm.
Today, right?
Yes, it did go down today.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean the bond.
No, no, but I mean, if we do it alone.
Right. Alright.
Or eight twenty.
Awesome for that.
You wanna make it officially, make a motion to correct the town administrator to look into bond and loan options for this project.
So moved. Go ahead a second. Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Yep. Thanks.
Okay, our next one is by department motion.
Oh.
Oh, you didn't hear anything?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
No lighter was again.
I'm, I'm.
Keep saying you're not gonna lie.
I'm not. Special event nonprofit fee waiver request.
I guess we have a, we have a request for a fee waiver. There is a nonprofit uh doing a special event at the Belmont Mall. It is special events for mobile oil change service event. Get changed for good. Uh, this event is a small event organized by the Windasbom Watershed Network, a nonprofit organization dedicated to preserving and protecting Lake Windasbom now and for future generations. So they charge only thirty-five dollars for the oil change. They only do ten vehicles. So they're only going to make their own fifty dollars. Our fee for the special event is two hundred. So that's why they're requesting um the waiver of the fee. They are nonprofit. It is going to us. And you are the only ones available, have the ability to waive that fee for a nonprofit.
Right, I'll make a motion to waive the special event fee of two hundred dollars for the nonprofit Windasbom Watershed Networks. Get changed for good, mobile oil change service event to be held on September twenty-third at the Belmont Marketplace.
It's twenty seventh, I think it's twenty-sixth.
Wow, whatever the date is.
Fifteen years.
September. Okay. We got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah. Now, so.
That one, I mean.
That was. All.
Now fire it possibly. Promotion.
Do you wanna speak to the, the promotion, the recent promotion in your car?
As you know, um, Tenma Curry retired, and that gives vacancy in the tenant's position. We did process, we ended up having, we started with four contestants or interviewees. Narrowed it down to three, um, and then one guy ended up pulling out of it anyways, and we ended up putting Nate Phillips um, with internal, an internal promotion.
Alright. Yeah. Good, yes.
In, in Deb, um, Becky did give me for distribution your August.
Help.
Uh, I'm sorry, what do you call this? Um.
Uh, our statistics.
Your statistics, uh, did you have it? And no, I'm just kinda learning this thing now. Do you wanna speak to her or do you wanna put it on the agenda for next week or is this smart just for FYI for them?
Um, that's pretty much you guys wanted that. Close them off?
Yeah.
Um, if there's any questions you have on them, I'm sure I can answer them. I'm really good. Um, you show them where we're at in calls, what we're doing.
Question, thanks.
We have, we'll, we'll get you next time. Alright.
I have just got a here.
Yeah, no, that's not a problem. Awesome. Alright, okay. Um, citizen.
Compliment.
Compliment. Okay.
I said not gonna lie.
Oh, my God. Citizen compliment, wow.
Yeah, so we do have a compliment that I would like to share. Um, you know, I, I think far as many times you may hear of the citizen complaints and this and that. And when we actually do get, and we do get more compliments more often than not. But these were physically sent in to us, so I wanted to share them and whoever wants to listen. Um, we did get one compliment from uh Jack Greeley. Uh, he visited the ancestor's office the other day. As usual, the woman was delightful, helpful and professional. I've lived in Belmont for three years, very. Every interaction with the clerk's office, building office, assessing office has, everyone has always been the same. Awesome group of people on our town hall.
Nice.
And then just a few, yesterday I also got another compliment, and this one is for uh Devin Tibbetts in our clerk's office specifically. This was from Brian Walker Teeth. I'm sorry about, person I don't read that. I'll just read a little snippet. It says, uh, she was professional, courteous and put me at ease. It may have been a simple matter, but I was very relieved after speaking with her. In today's world, there is so much lack of respect and never mind customer service. Ms. Tibbetts was a breath of fresh air, and I just wanted to acknowledge her kindness and help. I feel she is certainly an asset to your office. Thank you again, Ms. Tibbetts, from an old retired veteran, so.
I have to laugh, I, this is cute because it's, it's, this first one was Town of Belmont Citizen Complaint Report.
Well, thanks.
And then, then they crossed out the complaint and wrote co-, uh, wrote compliment. So we gotta give you different.
I agree.
Man, just check the bar, so.
Just check the bar.
Awesome. Okay, um, old business. Do we have any other old business?
Oh, I forgot to put other.
Do we have? That's right, so do we have any other new business? That's okay. It's. That's what happens when you get a compliment.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
That's all we're not doing.
Yeah, alright. Um, any, okay, so now we're onto old business.
Uh, yes, we just have two things in the other old business. Um, we, Colleen has distributed to you a draft letter. Um. What was the date of the article?
Um, newspaper article.
Nine nine.
I nine.
There was a newspaper article on I nine in the Daily Sun that had a lot of misinformation um reported.
Misleading.
Misleading.
Misleading stuff.
And Colleen has reached out directly to the Sun to correct some of those inaccuracies. The Sun has agreed to fix some of the inaccuracies, but not all in their online version only. Um, and we just feel that it might be more beneficial that we put a letter to the editor from ourselves addressing a lot of the error, the missions, um, however you wanna say that.
Yeah.
Um, and if they agree to put it in, great. If not, and I, if not, if not for nothing, we'll at least put it on our website so that people.
They don't acknowledge it, we should send a letter to the editor. Because their unformation is not correct.
It's just a letter to the editor.
I know, but I mean, if it continues, because it's not been correct. It's not the first month. But the last three, four times this has come out, the wording of it is not actually what happened in the meeting.
I think I appreciate them trying to put weight on us, maybe still do a long ball, but at least I believe.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
She's clear on this sign up.
The main thing, we're very appreciative that they're attending our meetings, that they're highlighting our meetings.
Meetings, are they?
Right.
But their, their interpretation of what exactly said it is incorrect.
Appreciate it, you know, that, but if you would prefer that they would report correctly, because I've always said or reported.
Yeah, I have done that.
Right. Okay, do any other old business?
I don't know, it's just.
Uh, the only other thing I have is I had come to you in um, in regards to some safety concerns at town hall. And one of those um, concerns was the, the back entrance to the administrative office. And we had discussed a, a door separator. Um, I asked Patrick and he said that he and Kyle can do a split door for a few hundred dollars. Uh, she was looking for your approval to go ahead with that.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry.
They're gonna repurpose the non, over here in the middle and.
Door is, walk back. People walk to this and.
I'm saying that.
Okay.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have, unless there's any citizen comments.
Any? No, no, they have other points.
How are we gonna market um this year's budget? What are we gonna do?
We're not gonna have a budget this year. I, I hate negativity, so we're not gonna vote it anyway, so why bother doing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
We have to do.
Somehow, some way, though, we do need to try to strategize how we're going to sell this year's budget.
I mean.
I mean, that's, you know.
It's disturbing.
Be the.
Cause it takes a lot of, it's a lot, there's hundreds of hours to, to trying to create this budget and then to just have it shut down, you know? Because we're either um hoarding money or we're whatever.
Well, it's a whole education.
Yeah, it is, it is. Hmm.
I just think, you know, just by putting it out there, we're gonna end up with the same situation again. I mean, somehow, some way, everyone wants to hide behind keyboards and not have the facts. And they don't, you know, I mean, we have a town newsletter, but I mean, how many people are soliciting to that?
And it is, uh, yeah.
I know, I mean. I mean, is it worth it to, when we start getting closer to get some idea of the budget, just uh looking at perhaps the school does a bulk mailer, why can't we partner with them? And put ours with theirs or, you know, do a, maybe we need to look at, get somebody to fund. Um, do some distribution, I mean, like mail distribution.
Yeah.
So at least somebody's getting some here. And whether we do it in sections, so it doesn't look like.
And how do we get people to even go out and vote?
But if you get a good education.
One on one.
Lots of one on one.
Okay, that's, that's how the police department got passed. It was one on one.
We took the tax maps, we went into.
Yeah.
All kinds of sections, identified people we knew in the sections and virtually educated them so they could educate their neighbors in their areas. I mean, that's really.
Oh, when we did the study last year, eighty-six cents of every tax bill went to the school.
And that's.
Yeah, but I think, John, you know what? At this point, we need to be selfish and look at the town side, yeah.
Why? But they didn't wanna listen to that?
Well, and we know that. But again, that's school, it's about kids and therefore, you know, we've been here for fifteen, forty, fifty years, whatever. And no matter how many years you've been here, school budgets never settle, never. Whether they were town meeting or now SB two. So I think as a town, and that's a school district, I think we need to get selfish and look at the town portion and stop worrying about what they're doing.
Yeah.
And focus on what we're doing. Because we're the core. I mean, if we don't have a highway department doing roads, then the school buses aren't ruling over, and you know that. So I think those are the types of conversations, no different than all of this, you know, just explosion of.
Every small town. Let's say located on a big lake.
Yes.
Has the same problem we.
We do, and so.
Land on site and somebody there screwed up a couple million bucks. Right? And the school.
Can I tell you what'd be screwed up? I've been doing a budget in this town for eight years. Every time I get up and do this budget, you guys, okay, I want flat line. I want one percent, I want two percent. And I've got up here, we've done everything we could to hold the line for you guys. The voters haven't appreciated that.
No.
Cause you know what we should have been doing, and I told you guys this for years, you need to put a little bit more in, a little bit more in. Because if you don't, if something like this happens, you've got nothing to fall back on. And now we're up the creek. Literally.
Yeah, we're not.
So you guys, so we've worked really hard, all of us budgeting, all of us to, to, to hold it to this and hold it that. And you guys have been hard on me and everybody else, seriously.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you know what? It's a slap in the face that the voters don't appreciate this, and they get up and they just go, come in for all our time and effort and just vote no. Cause I'll tell you, I've tried to be the most conservative director, the most conservative department head, and it just gets thrown right back in your face. That's my statement.
Well, and it's about needs versus wants. I mean, is that, and I think that as we move forward towards March, I think we really and truly, and we'll have staff meetings hopefully to kinda really kinda try to get a handle on how we can approach some of these issues, but, but we also have to be, as department heads, it's tough being a taxpayer and a department head. And trying to separate that, but honestly and truly.
Yeah.
I mean, when we did the police department look at, we had one town person try to accuse us of strong namin, department members. So whatever was, I mean, and we weren't doing that, but again, so it's a fine line. But I do think that we need to think about strategically planning on making some different types.
What I find a little unnerving is that, and this is since police department, is that we have a lot of new residents in this town.
Yeah.
And a lot of those new residents have bought some pretty expensive homes, okay? And they're not interested. They, they don't care what their tax bill is. They just pay it and move on. I mean, it's, I've heard this from several different people. And, but again, they don't.
They don't. I think those are the ones that are coming in voting no, is they don't want any.
I don't, I, I don't.
Well, I'm out there and I hear it, and these people come up and they've moved up here from wherever they are. And they come in, they don't care about our budget. If they come in and vote, they just vote no, because they came up with a mindset that this is what I wanna pay, and this is how I wanna live. And I'm not gonna give them that.
And any percent of them don't have anybody in the school. They don't care about the school issue, they don't care about the balance of where the money goes. All they care about, they sold the house, and a great story, two years ago. I'm in a town hall, just before Centee retired, I was like, John, you ought to meet this man. He bought a big, big house that was for sale for ten years up Hurricane Row. Man died, he was part of his estate, and he bought that house for four lots, right on the right hand side. So I said, well, welcome here, and I said, what brought you? He says, well, in an hour, an hour and a quarter, I can be in Hannover, one of the best hospitals in the world. Another hour, an hour and a quarter, I can be in Boston. Another hour, an hour and a quarter, I can be in Boston. Down to another great hospital. You got a good hospital in the area. I can go to the ocean in less than two hours. I got a boat over Winnebago. I call up, they put it in the water. I said, what did you do? He said, I worked for GE as a foreman for thirty years down in Mattapan. I bought a duplex in nineteen fifty-six. I paid thirty-five thousand dollars for this duplex. I just sold it for three point eight million dollars and I had the same family live beside me for all those years. They paid the rent. I had no mortgages. I came up here. Yeah. I'm happy to claim.
But that is a call of them.
No, but a lot of that property that, but they moved up here, they sold their property for good money, for a lot of money. So down there in the Duke I Road, if I told you there's gonna be eight houses out there with the average price of eight hundred thousand dollars, you just said, no, thank you. But they're there.
You know, the fact, the fact of the matter is, and I, that's a term that I got from John for years, is we worked really, really hard for a lot of years. And you know, I, I really, I'm not gonna mention any names, but a very smart gentleman told me when I first started this job. Because I was doing everything I could to pinch a penny and we're gonna do this, we're gonna save this. And you looked right at him, he says, then I'm gonna thank you for that. And you know what? He was right.
And you know something, this is a good example. Here we, here we have philosophy use trying to hold things.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Everybody here, every single year.
We get accused. It's, it's, yeah. Yeah.
Sonny would call me up and say, no, 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 correct, two percent.
Yeah.
No offense, but that's, but this is what we get. We get kicked in the teeth for it. We get no thanks. You know?
Well, I think.
Because you guys are really a truck.
And the services are becoming more and more demanded and, and I think that they need to, individuals in town need to know what is gonna be compromised and without a threat behind it. I mean, the reality of it.
Yeah, if you tell them to, it gets better.
Right. So it's kind of like paying now, pay later, but yeah, we have to find a different approach to get that message out. And I don't think.
Well, we're gonna pay later.
Yeah, I'm convinced it's this big huge group coming in, because I don't care. They're not a open block.
Right.
We stood out there, I mean, out there for, I think, thirty years and I am seeing different people that I've never seen before. And I'm not doing this issue.
Neither am I.
Neither am I.
Oh, you're good, uh, really. I, I do think though, honestly, I mean, we, we do need to think about some, um, some new approaches.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I don't think that the mailer should be let out. I'm saying, I know postage, postage is expensive, but I think that if we, you know, had two or three different, I mean, this is going to every resident. It isn't going to select the ones. I, I, I do think that we might get more bang for our buck really, because the, the town website, it's great, but it's the same group of people. It's not, we're not reaching out to that other group. And it's just a thought, amigo.
All right. Well, thanks. Our next meeting is scheduled for October first at ten o'clock in the morning. And we have to go back into non-public.
I have a request from a department head, uh, to move to a non-public, uh, under letter C.
Okay, so we are, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Ten, um, we need to go into non-public, uh, ninety-one dash A, colon, three. Yeah, colon, number three, row number, number two, letter C. I don't know how that came out. Just, all right.
Do you want to show all these doors?
Yes, please. Thank you. Do I have a second for that? I'll, thank you, dear. All in favor?
Aye.